Hello 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 everyone welcome to today's livestream. Let me fire up our project quickly. There is something really interesting I had to show you. I was testing it out so it was crazy. So let me first run the project. And as always I didn't work much on the project side. I did not update any anything specific in the project. Hello Shroth, how are you? Thank you very much for being here. Let me show you something. Okay. I'm doing good, I'm doing good. How are you doing? Ah it's slow but it is doing good. I'll show how is this. I will show you. So there is one thing really interesting I saw which I will share now. So as you remember they introduced Blender for iPad. It's just something new they have tested so there is basically you can touch and do stuff. So they got me thinking like where is this for Android. Yeah so luckily I saw it. I don't have the webpages now with our searching but I have on my tablet basically. So let me show you. So I tested something yesterday. So there were like two apps I found which were same Blender for Android basically some third party people made a port to for Blender 2 too basically. Uh let me make a so here. So this is basically one of the port. I think this is version three and I was sculpting last night and it's still there. It's not fully intuitive. It's basically you have to use this to rotate it around but it and you can you know pan it and zoom it and then you I can use my pen to sculpt basically around. And if I take this and I show you. So is it, is it? Did you notice that? Yeah, no. So so yeah it is basically working here. And this was the last session I think it remembered. I tried some physics simulation like rigid body and stuff and it was working fine. And this rigid body was perfect. It was falling and sculpting definitely is there. I tried installing plugin and then it started crashing. Basically it did not crash but kept giving error. So I had to close it down. So this is like version three I believe. So let me splash screen if I open. So it's like 3.6.2 basically this one. And then there was another app. This is not official uh for for your I I hope this run because it ran once and then it didn't run afterwards. So we'll see if it run. I'll show you. So this is really awesome. Uh it is there. So soon we will have on Android tablet also. So I bought this is like usually I have for entertainment. And I've seen uh my good friend Rohit. He is a character artist. He is using you know uh Rohit is a character artist. He use Nomad's curve on there. So if I can show he post on social media more. So here is his portfolio. It's like Rohit Singh where you can follow him. He is like wonderful person and great artist. He is doing all these in you know I did to login but you can check. These all done in in his iPad I think. So look at the I can't even imagine doing it in ZBrush like he did it on tablet. And a fun story and he made a caricature version of his story from with his friends and some mythological some creature with Nomad. So yeah. I don't think it will open. So yeah this is his profile. So you can go ahead and be feel awesome about it. So I'll share you the link in the chat. It is there. So this is what uh something new. I had another one but I forgot what I wanted to discuss. There is this one is perfectly is there that I was testing Android and it is working. Not all the add-ons work but if if I will test geometry nodes if I'm able to. Uh pen does not work properly but I have Bluetooth keyboard and mouse here, a Logitech kit. So maybe that will work. So I will test out with this. So I have this keyboard and mouse. So I use this whenever I go out I take my tablet. I remotely access my computer from there. But I will test out my this Android version of Blender also. It will be great. So yeah so that's it. Let me see if project is open. So we can continue and see what we need to do on there. If you have any question, let me know. I was wondering when this will happen. Yeah, yeah, this should happen long time ago. Also like the I I was hoping to see everything Blender as well as the game engine basically if we get that because we already have simulation nodes in in the Blender. So let me show you. Here I can see. Because there is recently they have added this. This ah my cloud flare. Basically there is there was a simulation node before but what we are talking about is like soft body and rigid body simulation. Now it's everything is here. So I will move here. Come on cloud filler. Yeah so here something like this that where you will you know with this this one let's play this one. So you have made something using geometry nodes. Yeah and then you can simulate it. Right? So somehow it activates it. So it's it's a simulation which is whether so it's almost like little bit on the path of the Houdini stuff how you where you simulate. We definitely want to test it out. We'll see. It's like last year they started it and we are super slow. Look at that. Isn't that crazy? Different shapes. Nice. Yeah so this is basically the physics node here and then look at the amount of progress they have made. Awesome stuff. Yeah, that's why port blender if you can. Yeah so the this was again simulation for the here. Yeah there was simulation node but now the physics node maybe I should search geometry node physics simulation. But this is just the old one. But this new one something they are doing. I saw it in somewhere in the video also. So yeah so that is something new. I will test it out in in our tablet. Because the other version was version four alpha, 4.0 alpha. So pretty new. So we'll see if the newer version comes or not. So this is our scene. From here maybe maybe we should move our head towards the side but this is here. And we made last time polish this. And I showed a little bit how to blend it here. You see here is there. So we have different way we can place it on top of it. We got a little match it perfectly but you get this unique thing and on the corners and then top we have this. Don't worry too much about it but we can go do the displacement on this also if we need to. Yeah this is the bridge. I'm happy that we polished it a bit. So it's more blended with the terrain. Camera angle of this. Okay and as we have made this tube back we can I believe simply lower this part first. So we have almost all the church visible and also we can remove this wall from here. And we made bunch of stuff like even this one is here which is a debris maker. So we have a lot of stuff. Yeah. So yeah I remember what I wanted to talk about. There is something with if I go to art session. And I recently saw work of my good friend Dinesh Sivie. Yeah. And there is two things I wanted to share for this. One is insecurity. Like every other art day I see like this is like really great scene and I and I'm I'm trying to get to this level of blending, right? And if you come down you see nice breakdown all the materials, all the areas like it took time, takes time to you know basically you know set dress, place a set and all the stuff. Yeah so it definitely took some time to create all the stuff. But also I show you one more thing like it's it's not everything is the new. He used most of the stuff from here and I created some new from here. So you already have most of the you know assets and textures already. Right? So you see so the flowers just notice the flowers, grass and dirt textures and everything, right? So you have all. Right? You see this pebbles are placed here, the fence is here. So similar to what we were talking about. It's same he used in most of this. See, now you will notice this. So this is what I was talking about in the start also like reusing of the thing. So you can work on more stuff once you have all the stuff. So he have a good base of assets and everything from this and then he just had to expand it. So first he I remember when he is like two years ago when he when he was working on it. He asked for feedback and and asked me to show showed me. So basically it was I asked him to keep it limited, not make it super big, right? So now he had this all these assets and then the second environment he made is like basically more longer in the horizon and kind of a level. So this is how basically I suggest to do things as well. So it's it's really good and gave me honestly some insecurities. Regular says that really a lot of work, right? And he's getting good praise for it also. Yeah so yeah so this is the basically I wanted to show. Yeah so this is you see the the path and everything. Again this have the similar stuff. You see the path is there. Yeah I think he hand sculpted it. There is no mesh or anything. Like he has sculpted it closely and you see the place the grass on the sides with some flowers and some fence with some flower and rocks but here just pebbles and some debris. And here's the water, not stressing too much about any form or anything. It's just water with good reflection. And also it's calm down at distance. Right? So overall everything is good. Like you have lighting, the shadow, you and everything is working well for this. Okay, the early morning light. Yeah so this look like without material but it's there. Uh it's fast but it's okay. This look like there's no texture on that. But if there is. But look at that. Right? So the amount of detail. Yeah that's that's the that's that's why I wanted to show this. Uh because this these are all manually painted. All the grass and everything this like even this making this. So these are the Quixel assets I believe. These ones are from Quixel. But some of them have his. He used Quixel plus some of his and blended them well. That's what the our part is. Even if you see the bottom of this tree he placed some grass around it. Right? So and and you know painted some path with it with the layer. Okay even the landscape if landscape layer grass is populating from there it's still something nice, right? If you make different landscape layers and this is muddy dirt and everything is all really hand place. He took all these camera angles and you know worked on it from some areas like okay I need to set dress this properly. Surely we will have a lot of references. Let's see if we have break down here. See, these are some Quixel assets. And he made these. And yeah he got spotlight for it also which is wonderful and yeah. Great artwork. Yeah so this is another issue. You guys as a thing like even if you make again let me show you again. Again if you starting up even if you make just this house just focus on this as a diorama is enough for start like see like this this seems cardy. Right? But overall everything is so jelled well that it does not matter. I see if even if we make this scene without changing camera from this camera angle like little bit more on center so we have more whole house is visible. It's totally fine. Right? So you are working on houses, addressing, just making this part of it. And then you can move on to if you want to add like these details are there this here and then mountains on the back. There's a lot of stuff happening. So if you limit your camera it will help you finish thing fast. So once you have your house. Guys, house is there, right? And when it was we were talking about from this angle I asked him to keep it simple, right? But he was crazy. He wanted to go, right? So yeah so this is basically it so you start small and then slowly slowly expand upon it. You can reuse the detail and you know make things uh expand or bigger. Okay. So yeah so this is here. So let's even if we decide to not to use the path, it's totally fine. Yeah. Path mesh, sorry. If you don't want to use path mesh but we have to paint the thing. But why we use path mesh? To give this directionality. So imagine if there is some cart or something like that pass by more often than this will look odd. Uh because the texture will be tiling straight, not in arches. So if you need those arches uh muddy trails, then we need it definitely. Okay. So yeah this is the path basically. So you can delete this one. And these both if you want to. And really like the system. See sampling it from the terrain. That's the benefit of it. It will automatically snap. And um just just making this move. Right, perfect. So yeah so this is going here and then path leading to to church and then this S curve is there. Perfect. And we can look it from camera angle also. Right still perfect. This this river here and then the mountain we need to make smooth and now churches are at place we can you know move it here also if we want to match it exact but we don't need to. Our church is on the right location and we have you know here we have our flowing water, here we have a river, here we have our basically mountains peak. So basically all the points have basically all the good stuff. Just flow it. And perfect. Now one thing is making the river. That is there and the second blending the rocks. So we have to do it much better. So let's see if someone have anything in the chat. Yep, it works and let me see if there is there are people joining in. I'm commenting here. I'm just bringing people if there are more people who come in there. Okay. And my Mel Studio for some reason decided to update itself. So I'm not streaming right now to others. Maybe I need to restart. So I'm not streaming to other platforms like Kick and everything. I'm doing it using OBS only. Okay, so let's continue. Um I can also do posted in our forgot to post in our Discord. Turn me quickly. Give me a second. Cool, we have posted there. Nice. I also started doing is started posting community spotlight. So if you have finished work or work in progress. Uh so I will pick up a good work in progress from our bootcamp also and finished work from our community and we'll post it on LinkedIn. I have like seventy five hundred connections. So it will give a little bit more eyes and reach out. So I hope that helps and it also helps our community also. So yeah, so that's a cycle. Basically I'm most lazy not to do it before but I started now. So we'll do it, okay? So let's continue with this and and let's make a river first. This is like fun thing because I'm learning PCG with it. So it's much more fun for me at least. And we had our content browser is on but where it is? Here? Where is it? Okay, let's just do it this way. Okay, so we have I'm getting okay. Yeah, Shroth you can ask in the here also, in the chat also. So define. I know, I know it it affects definitely but the only thing is the is the time only I have. My evenings are busy now. I cannot do because I have other responsibilities. I go to gym, even the social activities all are happening in the evening. So after this is the only time and I wake up late and work late. So either I will do very late in the night or I will do now. So this is the perfect time for now. I started with this. So maybe if I find time in the evening I will do that time also but for now I want to keep this timing every day to do. In here we have a path and we call new make new folder called river. And we have a path is here or this path is and fence debris is there. Stonewall is there and let's delete the fence and the path. Maybe I should keep the path in here only but I have moved it to that place so. And it will be in landscape path. It's here. It should be there technically. So I will copy here. And I would call the river one A. So this is basically the path. Path basically with the mesh. Plan sample it have a mesh and then the mesh is basically driving all the stuff. We can try putting the mesh again and at least we can take you know shader from it. Okay? So let me bring it here. Bring it here. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna add. Water. And I will put it in the water only. Make current folder. This water zone is already there. So water. Water body river. We got the river here. We'll see if it is uh. Nice, it is. This time it's perfectly working with landscape. Don't worry about it, but what I wanted to show like if you go below it. You add this. Nice shader, which is good. So you can select this and I believe we'll find its shader somewhere here. Water material. Yeah, so we can see where it is. It's in the water content and H load. Now we can keep this path. Somewhere safe. And there will be multiple H load, there is functions. And water. Because the water shallow water will have different ones, so like imagine we have this, so first let me. Select all the points. And width I need to make. More. See, it's also flowing in that same direction, so that's. Yeah, was talking about. It's not possible with normal layers. And if we select again. And your width is fine. All of. Into reduce. Yes, creating here. This thing again. Select again all of them. And let's add the. Shallow water. Shallow water river. It's here. And here we need to add the source river water bodies. And we only have one. And it will change the material, you see? But I will still have this depth. So what we need to do is the. Basically. Reset and this will flow the water. And you will see we have. Water flowing. But it's gone. Right, so this one don't have, I think you have big. Let's see. So this one is different, so even if we we can select this. And we can say there's a big texture, I think, from that is surface normal. Let's reset it. You know what I want is to have this basically shader. There is this different material, like big sim and uh spline river material. So there are more, so I will click. I see here we have Niagara material, so I'll copy this. Keep this path also, so we will try it on our. Okay, so I'll try it on our uh. Our spline river, so what I'm gonna do, I'm just uh. Uh we'll delete these or hide these for now. They wanted. And now we go. Be cool lens, be cool modeling tools. And in the spline. Uh create draw spline. And I will do it simply. Like normally. Okay. We accepted and this is water with the spline actor is good. Make a slightly curve basically here. Just to get. Little bit of curve. Good and this is snap to our. Bridge, so totally fine. Can easily fix it. What this is? Okay, so now we have this thing. And we can actually select all of them and. We can play with the rotation because see. It's green. So I can make it zero. Please. So all will be basically flat. From its point and then we can control it. And with this spline we can control even if you make the river up and down unnaturally, it's totally fine because. Who cares? Uh and then for the simulation, we need to make it downstream, this is specifically. This here and uh. The water body is affecting the terrain also, so I'll delete that. So we have better, you see, now we know. How it's floating better. Or just move this vertex here. Okay, so we have this line, we call it. Must be. Uh river. On it. And this is where the fun begins. So we need is just need to go to the folder in the river, I'll open it again here. We just need to put the tag. For like get landscape we have get spline data and we say okay, uh we call it uh river. So we're supplying. I'll copy this. Yeah, and we will do it on our. Search tag. Reverse plan is here. And we need to just drag and drop our reverse plane here, I will put it on the bridge, yeah you see? We get it, so it's for now giving us the road mesh, road mesh, sorry. And. And even if I want to keep it simply, I can reset this and now give the bounds. Bigger. So this is, this covers the whole river, which is good. And less. And let's make this also a little bit bigger. And if you want to, I would say like I can rotate this. To match. The we can make it more smaller, right? So it will still cover our whole river and beyond. Basically, you see this cube. Uh or rectangle, so I'll move it little bit forward, so we have more, you see? It. Automatically update based on our thing. So yeah, so this is how uh PCG is the more useful for many. The path is still there, so what we can do, we can select select the path only. And we just, you know, move the point and it will automatically update with the path also. You see? And what is happening here? It is not updated there properly. Okay, so now it's updated there also. So yes, there's a little bit update issue, I think you can rebuild all also when we click here, there must be. You know, create or build all button, but this is good. Now. Now we know what we have created in our PCG here. So this river is is using the similar stuff as our previous one. So they have spline data and the spline sampler and the transforming point and the credit is plan and they're putting the mesh. And the mesh is what we need right now. Uh that could be anything, uh it could be a plane or a rectangle or anything, so I would just take a plane. For now and then convert it to static mesh or we can check in the materials if we have already. Uh what we can do, we can simply. For the time being and to test also, I will select the static mesh and I will say plane. And there's water plane, what is this? Okay, this is uh from uh water materials, I think. So what we can do, here we can see we have I think water materials in here. And meshes we can see what we have. This is island. Has some rapids. So let's. Let's see if uh this or this. I think rapids is uh better. This is what we put water plane, let's see if we try putting rapids in here. Okay. So this is what happening. It's a. So these materials are uh good also and even the water materials by. Uh epic are also, you know, simple. This ocean water, I don't know, that's that's will that will work. And we just need plane, so we can simply. You know, search for plane and we put simple plane. Uh which can predefined. The basic plane. That's all. Yes, is it this one is not aligned, I think? So again we will. Put another one, let's search, just play and otherwise we'll create if if nothing, nothing. Okay, so plane was not mesh, I think. Static mesh only. Yeah, there it is. So now I need to basically just. Scale it and. Transform the point basically. We transform the point with this. Four. And also we push it up. Uh I will can just bring this in here so you know what's happening, so I can push this up. Enter. Uh and yeah, this is like zero and two hundred, so just mind. Variation is good, but this don't work always. So depending on how high we want it, uh I will make it four hundred. Four hundred. Let's test this out and we make it eight. Eight. I think we can make it more bigger. See the the variation how it works, so twenty. Twenty five. Thirty two thirty, yeah like I wanted to make it like you know go. All in there. And I think the scale should be. Let's see if we make it one. Does it make any difference? Nope. Specifically this up and down, I think we can use uh more topology in there. On a larger plane, we don't have to scale it uh that much. Right, but because uh this is from this point. And we can see how many points. Uh the sample. Let's make it five hundred, if it add more or less, there are more, so we say. Yeah, so we to make it more uh. Squareish, yeah, this is, these are. More squareish, okay? And not the perfect, but wait for our. See, we can simply. Oh yeah, because uh this is the getting projected on uh. Terrain. So. I'll remove this. Okay, so now we can. Simply move and control it. Yeah, with this we don't even need to, you know, make it. Exactly. Um transform that we have did. So even if we make it zero, it will go to the spline and then we can shift the spline up. But rest of things are still getting projected based on spline, so we can still use it. Oh, for that. And this one is uh. In X also, we can see if we have. We don't need in X also, let me see if we. If we do zero in X as well, what happens and zero in Y? We don't want any. Any banking in the thing, uh if you don't know what banking is, this is called banking. Right, uh. I think in the in airplane language it's called, the plane is banking basically. So we got, you see, we got it filled. More and we can put another mesh, we can scale it easily in there. Uh if if this is too big for it. So we have it, our river going up and down. Finallyly. Okay, so yeah, we have it and now we can try apply materials on it. As uh as this is a mesh from this, what I'm gonna do, I will maybe we should create a plane. To create a. A rectangle. And I can make it, uh maybe we can measure it, basically how big we need. At least one thousand is ten meters. Please, this back is the minimum, yeah, and I can give subdivision. We can subdivide it later on also. But it will be nice to have some subdivision at least, I'll give twenty twenty maybe. Okay, so just to keep it optimal. So we have this plane and we can accept it. And this will create a mesh somewhere in there, so it's creating these meshes. So we uh in the generated data, so we can move this to here. So we can say. SM river. Plane one. Good. So now we can use this one as the mesh in our PCG. So let's open again. Spline mesh. And we have to be careful like how big it is, otherwise now it is like forty times transformed or thirty times. So we might we make it two, I think we have. Now just go to everywhere, so then. Now we have roughly it here, so now we can select the curve. Maybe place it better if we don't have enough. Yeah, and simply two point five, two three. Just to give some randomness. Cool, and let's this. If I press one, you see we have. This is river mesh and it's just not this because we have this grass is there which will replace and also there's pebbles. Which will also replace in there to add river bed. Yes, I'll show you basically, uh we should have made uh. To see, it's a rock. This is grass, okay, so this is grass. What word comments in here? I don't know how to make make uh. Box around it, not sure, no, so maybe we'll know. Okay, so this is here, so we have transform points is basically doing. Randomly in X and Y. But just to. See, everything I do, I can right-click on this and I can disable it. And the plane will go and now we can see how this looks like. And in these points, we are taking it from here, it's doing the. Landscape. Okay, and then uh we do the projection and then we re-sampling it here. Uh every ten increment, we get some grass, every hundred we get some pebble. And then we're transforming it as you already know. So I will go to just for this, I will do more, you see, we get more uh pebbles. And what I wanted to do was, you know. The density is fine, the transform uh point, I wanted to project it later on. If we can get to, so we get more precise things, so we can take. These uh. Two node again. Let me paste it here. And you know, before we put static mesh on top of it. We projected, so now you see, we get much better coverage. Look at that. Amount of stuff is there. And and now we can transform the point much more outward, the X is the minus. This is X, so it's totally fine, this one minus. And if uh if this is again, I put minus twenty, so that's for thirty, let's see. Okay, it's because. Yeah, we are projecting it afterwards, so we can uh we can't push them in. Some of them, I can duplicate this and put another transform point which I can actually first reset. So we not change anything. And we just use it to. You know, push some. Minus a little bit, but so, so we have more. You know, pebbles and everything, we can use different mesh, definitely. This is just a sample of what we are doing. And in the this, let's reduce the. Okay, and also sample, let's try increasing number of. These. Maybe it is fine, uh we can. Reduce. Unless increase. Some. Kill. Okay, so we get basically the pebbles and again this mesh we can easily replace. And let's leave this one because we don't need it. Okay, we got. River bed, uh rocks, and why this one is floating? Because it's too big, so totally fine, we can simply change the seed or when we will select the curve and change some things in here. Discover berserk basically, so you can try to find out, it's really difficult to control, it's better to change in. In here only, so there is some uh landscape is like that, so we can make it smooth, so totally fine. And select this. So we have river bed full of rocks. If you feel these are too many, then again come here and you can say, okay. Reduce it. Okay, so yeah, so this is uh in there and also not matching, they are like the debris, it will be debris, but no do we don't need, we need pebbles. So we create that mesh and now let's turn on the spline mesh again, okay? Now we got some of them poking out, some of them going in, which is totally fine. And it will be throughout, so it's not like this is in this side and if you feel we want to have more on. Some side. More on some, so we can control it. Now let's add uh water material to our plane and see how that reacts the from the. Engine data. Uh where is our? So this is the one we want to add material. So let me copy the path and let's try edge load first and see how that looks, otherwise we can use uh. This one. See? And what I can do, I can take this edge load and I can copy it into our folder, so we can change it. Copy here and this is. Am I? And river. So select this and add it. Open, so this is a shader, okay, so we have. This is most of the setting, they actually go down. It's not getting the depth, but it's totally fine. It is. Really, uh there are like a lot of settings in here, so you can change the water color and absorption and everything. And I don't know if there is water speed. If we have. Let's see whatever. Nothing. So it's like still water which we can. I think it works with the other one. Like I love how the depth is shown here, with that all and everything you can control here and. So I think distance. Also, we can change, I wanted to show is. The normal strength but to just as normal, so okay, fluid displacement multiplier. You have to, I think we have to create the flow map. What this is? It's a grid, okay? And we had uh. We have. Home. Is it, because I think it works with that mesh and we have to see what it add on that mesh, maybe there is a property, another thing. I think the there was river depth and everything we could change in here. Not change anything. See, yeah, simple parameter. How you want the color to be, so it's like now less. Think but much more calm, but you can see and I think. You know, depth and how, you know, depth it is. And let's reduce the color. More se- saturated, desaturated. Yeah, see? See if you want blue is totally fine and we can again bring it to simply. Normal water also. And depth is there underneath it and. We need to see how to turn on the flow and the velocity of it. And let's see if how. Okay, this is the scattering at the depth of it. Top is visible and. The depth is not there, which I wanted, so this is good, so this is one, and let's see the other one. The how Niagara material looks on this. So again, I'll go to that path. Um river Niagara water material river, let's try this uh and I will copy this to. Our folder again, so. Hmm. I will say MI. Water material report one A. Plane, take this. What this is not, oh sorry, this one. There is, but nothing show up. It also have the similar. This also have almost the same, but there are some advanced settings. Form is there. But how do you control it? That is a question. Okay, I'll say I'll take, I'll put back another one back again, so at least we. Have waters. And. We can again change. I think you can control the reflection and everything else also, like how this wave is. The one thing I wanted to test in this was. Let's select this, if I go to mesh paint. I've selected what is color mode RGB channels, it's showcasing it. So and if I. Paint. Or I take black and I fill it, it works. And I take a smaller brush, okay, just to test it, I will show you what I am trying to do here. Okay, and I take uh maybe red. Or maybe alpha, let's take alpha. And. Is it painting not? Okay, we we were not seeing alpha channel, alpha channel also we take and we fill. Black. Does it? And now. Okay, these are the pebbles and everything. So if I fill black, it does just fill in this and I. Then I go to red. And I paint it, yep. Yeah, I'll show you what I'm doing, it's basically the form mask. If you want to create a form, basically, you can utilize it and we say, okay. And for now, it doesn't change anything in this. And if I look. And if I look into I don't know, this don't have. Home is there. And the shader is will gonna be super complicated, so I don't want to you know, do get into this one. Look at this. Oh, it's so clean. Because I have a lot of, there's a flow map. Which we can see how it is taking flow map, beach foam, food simulation nice. Scattering and absorption, water opacity mask. It's a really good video. Really good. I love the there are waves, normal map. Water attributes, basic water. So if I don't want to destroy this, so I'll take this one where it is. And I'll copy it into our materials. So we can easily edit it and show you basically what I mean and where is it, where our materials? Now put into masters. Okay, and I'll create a new material instance. Let's put it into river again. Okay, so this is what I have in my folder, okay, so I can say, okay, I'll take vertex color. Okay, and we have to create a make or create material, I think it was make material attributes. Okay, and I'll say okay, this. And and the way was the option two. And let's say blend material attributes. Let's take this as A, this as B. And red as a mask. And I take it color. And I'll take a white. And let's add to base color and C and I have this material instance which I have brought into our river folder, I'm gonna add it to our water plane. This is MI river instance, this is what I created from it, see how it look by default. Nothing. And let's just save it. See how it turn up, otherwise we'll just make it simpler. There are wa- water materials on uh from Epic which are much more simpler and fast. Yep, you see. At least patches are visible. What? It it added on top of the pebbles, so the plate is gone, that's why. And we have so this is. Will be copied, but it's okay. Let's take this one also. And in this, I think the master is uh water material. So we add. And our instance. Let's put this one as perfect, see? We figured it out. So now you see we have wherever we are painted, we have um which does not look good now. But we have it. And we can basically control it using this itself, so I don't know how this will work. How they do the settings, we can figure it out or we simply use water material by uh app, I search water. And price free. So if I show you here, so these are the water, this is what we have used and this is the water material I was talking about. There is this ocean with the form, there this, a ru- super light, the super light also. I can add to this project and try add into this project also. Quickly if you can find it. Just give me a second. On what? Water planes add to project, can we add it in? No, it's not available in five. There's only four, version four, so unfortunate. And and we can play with other water also if for now, but I want to show like this is basically you can add form where we need it and we can multiply it with this, I will try one last thing. You know, let me close all the other stuff. So this is the material, let's open it from so I'll also save it as, so save all, don't or save everything. Let's look at the chat, if someone is there and it always asking anything. Anyone, no one is there, that's cool, let's see if anyone watching also, this I will, otherwise I will finish a little bit earlier to have some of the other stuff I was doing. Where is it, where is it? Just, just, just what to find. Yep, here. Okay, awesome. If you guys are watching, say hello, if you have any question, you can ask uh, that's how the fun is. Okay, it's still saving. Hmm, so what I can do, let me check. Check, let me check. Noise. And we can come on, it takes so long to save basically. It don't even have that much stuff. Okay, let's see if we have. Movies. Was looking at the things. If we need to. Let me turn back to chat and see if someone have, someone popped up. I'm sure while you're still here, you say hello, I'd love to hear from you. Hmm, and we have I'm taking so much time to save, that's what I'm waiting for and if I have anything in plan, there is nothing else much. I have to add that there's uh rocks I wanted to polish, but we spent enough time on the river. I'm happy uh maybe polish it, so it is there. This is PCG uh driven thing and we can control it and I'm happy we could do the what is blend. And also there was one question by Edward yesterday in the chat, I believe, about if our uh virtual texture work on normal meshes or not, which honestly I'm not sure. I never tested it, but with the landscape, at least I have tested it and there is that add-on and plugin I've shown that works with the meshes, so that could be a useful thing, so can be used, other than that, I'm not sure. Hmm. Yeah, we have tested, maybe it could because technically it should like if it create a volume and whatever underneath it, it might take a uh we can export the virtual texture and see if it capture the static meshes or not, but usually we'll do it from top. So we have to see how to do that, maybe we have to do multiple of those in small areas. We can test it out if that works or not. Okay, I turn, it's not saving, so I'll give it some time, so I believe it's already one and a half hour. So if anyone have any question, you can ask uh of this thing, I can still share if you guys know the drill, where is go. So if I just share. Okay. Here, you know the drill, is our Discord server, you can join it here, here's a salary survey, if you are from India and worked in the industry. Fill the salary survey or there is a format inside it, fill it, it will help us uh build a solid data which will share publicly. Without taking any name, it's anonymous, so do fill it out. If you need a portfolio review, you are stuck in a career and need a career guidance, sign up from here, I will help you get unstuck uh in this and here's our channel, do subscribe to it, watch some videos, support, give us feedback. What you like, what you don't, and if you have any format through suggestion, you please uh give us. And then uh we have our mentorship, if you ha- can afford, you want to support me, this is it. And there is course also you can buy and environment bootcamp which is free, open for everyone, you can join in. And if you have taken any of the service from me, call one-on-one or anything, do leave a testimonial uh a view, right, and I would really appreciate it. Okay, so yeah, so this is uh all for now. And people are still signing up for it, uh uh but nobody is making the thread in the chat. Maybe it's super difficult for them or maybe they don't want to, but I don't know, maybe I will send another message from this that you have to do it, so I will send this message or at least I will bring in people in the live streams, I'm doing it. So yeah, so we'll see how that goes and yeah, overall, thank you very much for the support, I hope this was uh help. I know we are doing a bit of random streams, but uh I want to finish my scene also with the things uh which I'm doing. Hmm, yeah, so yeah, take care and I will see you in the next one. Bye.